Thanks for your.
That's a good call.
All right, thank you for all coming. Yes, thank you for all coming tonight, meeting for the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal. It is February 12, 2025, Wednesday. We are 6:30 PM and we are at room 520. Ma'am, you gotta be quiet, the echo here. Ma'am, excuse me, hello, hey, ma'am, you gotta be quiet because we can hear everything here, disrupt us. And we are at 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Troy Larson, Ms. Veronica Devenese, our clerk, Jimmy Akabachi. My far left, associate member Connor Alden, Christopher Conti, regular member, Mr. Richard Sample, myself, Nazir Akalasi. We're gonna move to do some quick business. We'll start with the minutes of January 22nd.
I have reviewed the minutes. Mr. Conti reviewed them, made some comments. They've been corrected. They make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the minutes for January 22nd, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Eric, all in favor, so aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
I think Chris would be.
Right, exactly. Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So that's a go. All right, we're gonna do, continue public hearing, 21-23, Angela McEwen, 386 Main Street.
I'm not gonna pass anything out here unless we decide.
No, for clarification, Chris will be on all of these, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, on, on, for this matter, Chris, Mr. Conti will be voting for Ms. Devenese because she wasn't here to that process. Okay, public hearing still open. I hate to say this, Mr. Sam, what's your last name, Sam?
Iamelli.
Iamelli?
Iamelli.
Iamelli, you gotta stand up, get sworn in on this matter. Jimmy, wanna swear?
This is McCowan, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, very well. Public hearings open. Counselor, it's yours.
Sure. So we come here today on the petition that's been in front of you for quite some time. And we have the latest plan. Last, last time we talked about that we had explored going off of Main Street, but pursuant to a denial of a curb cut and also a letter from the planning office saying that that's, would affect the safety and welfare of town of Wareham. So we're looking at the original plan that we had, at the very end, after our peer review, which went through the town engineer who had okayed it, and now we have the engineer here. So specific questions can be answered.
Right, and the latest plan, it's.
Says, 11-223.
That's the latest plan? It was 11-223?
Yeah.
Correct, 36, yep.
All right. I, I came pick up a plan, it's fine. I picked up a plan and went over it in my house, studied as much as I can. Before I go forward, board member, you guys, any question on that? Anybody has any question before I go forward?
Nope.
All right, a few questions. I wanna start by the rear. What's the setback in the rear? 10 feet, correct?
10 feet rear setback, correct, yes.
All right, on the unit one, unit two, unit three, unit four, you don't have enough setback because you overhang. That includes in the setback. Once you do these rakes and overhang about a foot, you're gonna need a foot. So 10 feet is not gonna cut it unless you're gonna build the flush wall and the gutter that includes in the setback. So that's something you have to address.
Yes, that can certainly be adjusted.
So this is one thing. Where is, on the drainage, where is the gutters for the existing building? Where they going? I didn't see them going anywhere. Unless I was, I couldn't see them myself unless you could direct me.
Nope. So I believe they just run off right now. And a good portion of that is gonna spill into the driveway and find its way into the catch basins and into the system. There may be a small portion in the front that'll continue to run off, but with the storm management policy and the design we did, the runoff is still significant less after post, post-construction than it would be as it is today.
So you're not connected, connected them to, gonna connect them to the drainage you're building? I didn't see them connected to that drainage system.
Right, we didn't propose the roof leaders to be directly piped into the drainage system, but we can, we can certainly provide that, saying the natural flow of roof runoff is gonna.
Right, because with site plan, you know you can dispose water on town property because you don't want a major site plan, you gotta contain it.
Of course.
So you have the gutters of the other units running there. So you have to direct this. Therefore, you might have to redesign your drainage system. I'm not an engineer, but I built a lot of them. That looks wicked small, leaching. I know you have 1,000 gallons, but that's a small area. I know you ran your numbers, you did the perk test. I, I hope Richard, I mean, Phil is listening. I want him to check the numbers. Phil, you there?
Is Phil online? John?
All right, so I'm gonna need him to, we're gonna need that. So you gotta, you're gonna end up adding few, few leaching bits. Because that's a big surface. It's like 2,500 square feet of previous area. So that's the gutters issue we talked about. All right, the stone wall, I've heard over and over that it's not, it's the town wall. It's not, it's in the property. This is your plan, this is stamped, that stone wall is in your property.
Yeah, we have both the stone wall and the front property line shown on the plan. As you can see, more or less, the property line runs down the center of the stone wall.
So you own part of it. You're gonna be liable fixing that wall. That wall has to be designed and stamped by you or structure engineer how you're gonna, because that's a high wall, it's got a lot of pressure. You have to address these trees in it, these trees pushing that wall, building the wall around them, cutting them off. These are something, it has to be addressed because I walk in the spring there and the summer, and this wall is dangerous, as well as the area, not only your wall, a lot of areas are bad. So it does impose danger to the public. So it needs to be designed by an engineer and stamped and detail on the footings and everything. And you have to address as well as the trees.
The trees inside the wall, yep.
You could do, if you wanna keep them, go around them, but it's probably, it costs, probably best take them out. All right, consultant, I want Mr. Cordero. Hi, Phil, how are you? I want him to review that test, the perk test, and review the calc's after you add the gutters from that main building to make sure it checks. You hear that, Phil?
I do, we're happy to look at it.
Thank you. All right. I see during, in this, in the fall, they, the owner did some walkway, like a walkway concrete. I don't know, there's something about the commissioner. It looks to me steep and slippery. I think that's a building code matter, not us, but that's something has to be discussed with the commissioner before last minute you go there and the commissioner says that's slippery, that's steep. Because I know there's a certain percentage, and you know, of angle, you can't pass.
Right.
And driveways as well as walkways, there's something has to be checked. If the town consultant have an answer, would be nice. So that's thing. The, the utilities, I see you guys running underground utilities, which is nice. And you have overhead for the main building.
Correct.
I'd like to see future conduit underground. Because eventually this overhead is gonna break, and it's better to go underground. One day, these overheads gonna fall down, a tree, who knows? So it's good to have the conduits. It's much easier, it doesn't cost much, have them for the future. And if, if they go down, you could, the owner could just run them underground, and it's much better.
Okay.
So just the conduits underground, that would make sense. Commissioner, is the HVAC condenser has to comply with setbacks outside?
No.
Okay, so forget that. I was gonna say show the condensers on the side, so make sure it doesn't. But I know the overhang does, correct? The overhang does? I had the episode of mine, but.
Yeah, we haven't really been enforcing that, it's gone to the foundation.
You've been measuring to the foundation?
What's the bylaws says? Happened to me a while ago, and I had to.
I'd have to look, but we even, we even go into the foundation.
Okay, I believe otherwise, but if that's the case, you're in good shape. But I would like to get a definite answer.
I'll look at it tomorrow.
So we don't crash after. Does bulkhead comply?
That has to, definitely.
All right, if we look in the building, unit six, it just, I look at the grading. There's a manhole, Sam, over there that goes to the 25, 500 gallon oil-water separator. The elevation on that rim, 28.8.
Yep.
And the grade is there, 20, right on that corners, 25.5. You add the curb, 6 inches, so you at 30. So when the grade is at 30, you have like only 4, 5 feet, you have like 15, 16 inches drop, quick, like this, don't you think that's extreme?
Yeah, I'll take a second look at that, sure.
You know what I'm saying? So if somebody, unless you wanna put the curb and then drop the grade behind the curb, but your curb is not gonna last one season of flower if you don't support it from the back.
Right, right.
You know what I'm saying? So you gotta check that drainage manhole, you know which one I'm talking, drainage manhole one.
Drainage manhole one, yep, I see that.
So you need to consider that curb and that grade on the parking lot and bring it to, bring it somehow close.
Right, right.
Because you got like, I did my calculation, about 20 inches drop in 4 feet. Elevation, I guess it's too great. Okay, these are my comments for right now, that I think should, it's important that we had to be addressed.
Of course.
And some of them, like I said, like if the commissioner says 10 feet, it works, you're good, it don't bother me, I just don't wanna see you building that building, then all of a sudden, oops, that's a 1 feet overhang, you're encroaching, then you need a variance, and we start from scratch and become a big problem again. This is technical, based on technical. Going back to the variance, and over myself, like I said, I don't have problem with it myself, granting it and stuff, but I will definitely make a statement that, that the board, if the board agrees on granting the applicant a variance, that the board will make no guarantee that our variance imposed that you use this right away. So we don't, we're not guaranteeing you, if something comes up that has nothing to do with us. You can't say the board gave us the variance, now you'll have to let us. If the board give you this permit, you're on your own with that easement.
On that matter?
Yeah.
I think you're, what you're saying is appropriate. What's in front of this board is a variance. Any, any conversation regarding rates of way have nothing to do what's in front of this board.
Exactly, that's how it is. Whether you get it, you don't get it, you fight, you, and, and in your own words, you did, you, you addressed all the options from Main Street, and you couldn't get to it, right?
Correct.
So that's what your hardship based on, basically. In your words, to use the driveway, plus, again, that has nothing to do with us, we not guarantee.
And that's due to the topography specifically.
Absolutely, I totally understand.
The actual elevation.
Absolutely, I understand. But then again, we're not attorneys, we're not judges, we don't know what you own, and don't know, we're gonna leave it, exactly how Jimmy stated it, okay?
No, I was just kidding. If we grant a variance that was requested, or we deny it, but it would appear to me that we'll probably grant it, that's, that's totally separate from any argument that a neighbor has on another matter. For the board have made previous votes influenced by the argument over the right-of-way, overburdening, underburdening, burdening, had absolutely nothing to do with what's in front of this board. This board votes on what's in front of us, and what's in front of us is the variance for the number of units and whether they're attached or detached.
Correct. That being said, I'll start with Troy. Any questions?
No questions.
Veronica, any comments?
No.
Okay, Jimmy, you said your voice, Richard?
Nothing.
Chris?
Nope, no questions.
Connor, you have a question? I'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public who would like to speak on this matter? Is your attorney here, Mr. Reed?
No, he might, he should be online.
He is online?
I do have the attorney online, that's right.
Okay.
Did you get his hand up?
Yes.
All right. Attorney Silverstein, you there?
I am here, Mr. Chair, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
I won't say much, I can read the writing on the wall. Obviously, I've said that I don't agree that the issue of rights in the road or the effect of using that road on the neighbors, I don't agree, that's not relevant to the board's decision. Seems clear to me the board's gonna grant this. I would make one request, which is that if you're gonna grant it, you're gonna allow the access on this right-of-way. There is no need to put in this giant road to replace what's there now. And I would at least ask that the board condition approval on not altering the existing right-of-way. If the argument is this isn't overburdening easement because it's not really changing the use of the road that much, then you don't need to upgrade the road, you don't need to pave it and double its width. That would be my, my request to at least, for the board to at least do something for these neighbors, to at least listen to their concerns and take him, take them into account to some extent.
All right, I get this. Well, I, I agree. I mean, if I'm the applicant, I'll say, sure, don't make me pave it, thank you. Again, if he decides to pave it, that becomes you and them in court, that has nothing to do with us. But I'm, I'm assuming he'll say, sure, save me the money, I won't touch it, but again, that's not.
Well, respectfully, Mr. Chair, right now, if you approve the variance based on these plans, presumably you're gonna be conditioning that they have to build in accordance with the plans they presented. So you won't be leaving them that option, and you certainly have the ability. One of the things you're supposed to consider is detriment to the neighbors. So respectfully, I would say you definitely have the right and the ability to put a condition on that says no alteration of the existing right-of-way. There's just no need for it.
Thank you, Counselor.
If I may, that was actually a condition of the fire department widening, if I'm correct, I mean, 20 feet.
How about paving?
I'm not sure if they actually said pavement. We'd have to talk to Captain Smith, but I know that for.
I don't think he minds.
It's 20 feet as far as that's what they need for the fire.
20 feet, I understand, but gravel, if he leaves a gravel, I mean, they go in the woods if they have to. I don't think it needs to be paved. Counselor, 20 feet gravel is fine?
Unfortunately, I'm not in a position to confer with my clients right now. I suspect that they would prefer that to, you know, the superhighway that's proposed there, but.
Well, we, I mean, I, I don't think the board, I mean, correct me.
On a slippery slope, in my opinion, I think we need to vote on the variance.
And, and, and.
We're bringing up the same dirty wash.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, just because of the comment about superhighway, is the concern that cars will be going faster because there's gonna be tar?
Probably wanna keep the, the ethics of, the aesthetic of.
What about speed bumps? Has that been something that's been talked, why not?
That would just create a lot of noise, respectfully.
Really?
I mean, this is right next to their homes.
Speed bumps is a bad idea. I mean, I agree with Counsel Silverstein, if I keep a gravel as long as it's 20 feet five pound or that, I'll say why not?
The only thing I would say about the gravel, because I live on a dirt road, is you're gonna have a lot of dust, and it will come into your house.
That's the existing condition now.
Again, like Jimmy said, we're gonna work to the property line, we're not gonna, we're not gonna condition anything. Because even if we condition it for either party, it's out of our hand. So do you agree, Jimmy?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna make our permit based on that property line on law number 1079. We're not gonna make or dismake or pave or not pave or anything for that. Because if we do this, we're assuming automatically that they can do whatever they want with it, and you disagree with it, and we'll be in between, and we don't wanna. Is the board agree with me? So we just, we're gonna say anything within that property line, period. We're not gonna, I mean, if they go to, if the, Mr. Sam here goes to the fire department, and the fire department says, that's fine, 20 feet gravel is fine with us, sure enough. If they say you have to pave it, and they go pave it, and again, this is their thing. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, we can make a pave it, and we cannot make them pave it, because it's confusing, it's been confusing for three years for everybody here, and we need to get to the bottom to it. And that's, I think that's the bottom to it. We're not gonna get involved with that, period. As far as we concerned, the frontage is Main Street, they have enough frontage to build, they have enough square footage, and this is where we come in. And, and that's, this is it. This is, this is our stand. Any board member, if they disagree, please correct me. You good, you guys agree?
I'm good. I'm torn, quite frankly, because I don't know.
It's confusing.
I mean, you're saying if you're just stopping at the property line, and that, that's gonna be the way it's gonna be.
I mean, if, then if we do, then if we don't.
And then, and, yeah, and then the next project that comes in, it's a little different, and it's got the same thing, and I think it's.
We have to apply the same standard.
Okay.
Not only this, I mean.
No, I understand what Richard, I understand Richard's concern for the neighbors.
Right.
But what's in front of us is, do our bylaws provide for them to be able to erect what they're proposing to erect?
Period.
And.
Respectfully, that's just not true. You're allowed to.
One second.
Do we have the neighbors, do we want the neighbor to paint their house yellow? That's beyond our reach. Do we want the neighbor to mow their lawn every Thursday? That's none of our business. There's a right-of-way that they're gonna come in and out of. That's between the owners of the right-of-way and the developer of this property. What's in front of us is not the question of may they use that right-of-way? What's in front of us is do our zoning bylaws allow for the structures that they're proposing to erect?
Counselor, now we can hear you.
I'm sorry. I guess, and, and look, obviously, the board's gonna do what it's gonna do, but I just have to say that as a matter of law, it's just not true. When you have a proposal in front of you, you're considering the impacts of the proposal, and that includes off-site impact, especially when they're claiming ownership of, and they, they're gonna use this access, that's obviously part of the project. It's on the plans in front of you. So I don't know how anyone can say this isn't part of the project in front of you. If you don't wanna, you know, try to help the neighbors and, and put some conditions on, obviously, that's your prerogative. But I just have to correct the notion that somehow this is not properly part of what's in front of you, because it absolutely is. It's a decision you're gonna make whether or not you wanna try to mitigate the impact of this to some limited extent for these neighbors.
Counselor, let me put a small example for you that will answer you, that would answer this question. At the end of this driveway, if you notice on the sidewalk, there's a little curb on the sidewalk. In our procedures, we request these sidewalks because the town allow us, okay, zoning board, you could impose to put these curbs and handicap and this, impose them on the applicant or the developer. But what happened, we tell the developer, do this, and the town says, you know what, we changed your mind, you can't put curb, we just leave it the way it is. What do we tell them? We can't make them, right? Same, it's the same situation. If we impose.
There are conditions for off-site improvement and changes to rights of way all the time imposed by every land use board across the Commonwealth. I mean, I've been town council in dozens of towns for 30 years, it happens all the time. And it's, I mean, you can always think of hypotheticals, but the fact is, they have proposed specific plans, they've put them in front of you, that's what they're asking you to, to approve, and you're gonna be deciding to approve the plans in front of you, including what they proposed for the road. So to say that that's not part of what's in front of you, it's just legally not true.
I see his argument in that, like you said, the drainage.
Shouldn't drop, yeah.
So I, I, I see his argument. He's gonna argue for the neighbors, attorney Morton's gonna argue for the applicant.
I mean, does the applicant insist on paving it?
No, I think just 20 feet wide was required by the fire department.
And is the right-of-way on paper size is 20 feet?
Yes.
I mean, just gravel, are you okay not paving it? Don't pave it. Save money, I guess.
If I may, if you're gonna add gravel, you know what's gonna happen the first time they plow it, you're gonna have piles of rocks wherever the snow melts, so I think that's, and then if they take it from there and plow it into the street, then the street's gonna, town's gonna have to pick it up, so I'm not, I'm just gonna leave it alone, but I do.
I don't like gravel driveways either, especially with multiple.
But. Because this is definitely gonna be plowed, definitely.
Evidently, evidently, that's not our call, so, what I get out of it. So that was just an opinion on my end.
No, I agree with you, Richard.
Yeah, you're right, that's a long driveway, there's a lot of people live there, ambulance gotta get there, it's gonna get plowed, and you're right, it's gonna be a mess.
It may a mess.
As a neighbor, I'd want it paved, but as, that's not, again, that's, it is and it's not what's in front of us.
And then speed bumps don't do anything to anybody other than aggravate the people that aren't going fast on it, like the neighbors that are living there.
They just land in a brake.
If you go on a speed bump enough, they drive you nuts after a while.
Not only this, I don't think we are allowed to impose such thing.
It's true.
Anyway, again, like Jimmy said, we're gonna leave it away. They do what they want. Fire department says, go pave it, they wanna pave it, it's on them. We're not gonna restrict them from anything, using it, not using it, nothing. This is my position.
That's my position, too. The rest of the board can make other conditions, and we can vote accordingly.
Yeah, I mean, when this first came before us, and it's either approving or not approving, and then it's the applicant's responsibility regarding the road.
Right, to do allegiance, whatever.
Exactly.
Troy, you.
I agree.
Chris?
I'm good.
Connor, you have an input on that? Rich?
I say my piece.
All right, now, how's the board wanna do it? Do you wanna make a vote to close, maybe grant with the conditions I said, or wait to have them fix everything and come back? What's the wishes?
I would typically wanna say, let's grant and get them going forward. Where you've got a list of six or seven or eight items, you're asking Phil Cordero, the peer reviewer, to give feedback on some of the items. If we're gonna have feedback, then that feedback may or may not impact the vote. So I would, I would, with that in mind, I would say we continue. With the thought of getting the clock ticking on the 20 days after our decision for somebody to go file an appeal, I'd be willing to vote tonight.
Troy?
I agree.
Rich?
I agree.
Chris?
I'm good.
I'm only asking the people who get votes, or Veronica, or. I'm only asking the people who get votes, or Connor, because you can vote.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that you continue, just to have a clean plan set at the end of this. You don't wanna make this vote conditional to what sounds like a plan that's gonna be changed.
Then he said, and she said, and this and that.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Let's continue it, and let them.
We continue.
Get the plan redrawn, and.
We can't request that an updated set be submitted to the town?
Then after the updated plan is submitted, you look at it, and you say, "Oh, crap, that's not what I expected it to say."
Too bad, the plan's approved.
And we always, we get, we always guess, we just try and, I know we hold them three years trying to be kind, but.
You can, but you have, you have eight changes.
It's too complicated.
Are we all gonna trust Nazir to go in and review the plan?
Anyway, you're not gonna work it, land is frozen now.
Or are you gonna go review the plan, and if it suits you, or is it Troy?
I mean, it's not, they're not major changes, in my opinion.
I understand that, but.
There are a lot of, there are some changes.
In my opinion, that's what Attorney Silver's and Attorney Morton are here for, to challenge our opinions.
And if my theory was right about the four, that might give the engineer a hard time to play with these buildings. So, I think it's best what Sean said.
I make a motion to continue this matter for at least two weeks, but is two weeks enough time for you to get everything drawn, talk to Cudero, and get back? I'd just soon have the town engineer and the engineer for the project in total agreement before you come back in front of the board. So, if you need four weeks, say four weeks. If not, I'll make a motion for two.
And I'm gonna bring this with me, Sam. If you have a question, you could, you have my number at the office. You could call me, clarify it, and we fix everything. You come here clean. And I wanna mention also something, once, if the board, and once we grant this, the commissioner had, send me an email, it's very important, one time's come for occupancy, it's gotta be 100% done. Anything is not done, the commissioner cannot give you part occupancy. You have to come back to us for a bond or whatever. Before you go, also, on the landscaping and the fence, I did make a note here, I didn't get to that page. And there was a landscaping engineer, right? Yeah, it is. That's what's his name, Adwat, yeah.
Yep.
So, okay, so it is, I mean, if he stamped it, it is what it is. And you guys put on the fencing, too?
Fencing, we have the row of our bivides along the back line there.
Yeah, I saw that.
Sam, two and four.
May I, Commissioner?
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to remember what I do. Our deadline is supposed to be for turning in plans before they come to the meeting.
A week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A week? So, the plans will be done within a week and turned into the town, so we can approve.
So, you gotta turn them in Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Turn them in next Wednesday.
In order to come back in two, so you better go for the four.
Yeah, let's, let's go for the four then.
Okay, so what's four weeks, what's four weeks from tonight? March what?
Why, why don't you?
A month.
Take the chance for two weeks, and if you don't, say, "I don't." Give me an extension. You want, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I said a month.
You wanna take, take the chance, maybe you, you guys have time in the office and get it done.
Thirty days.
And you can turn it on the 19. And if you don't, you say, "Sorry, I couldn't. Give me another two weeks." Does that make sense?
Yes, let's do that.
It's okay with me. So, what's two weeks?
You know what I'm saying, Rich?
Twenty-six and two weeks.
The 26th, February 26th?
Yep.
You know what I'm saying, Rich? If they could hustle and get it done, good for them.
I just asked, just for clarification.
I'd like to make a motion that this matter be continued until 2/26/25.
That is the rule. They have to come with the 19. If they hustle and get it on the 19, good.
I'll second.
And it's been seconded.
Oh, I can't second.
The motion on the floor has been seconded.
All right, any discussion on the motion? I hear none. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. We'll see you.
2/26/25.
On the 26th. By the 19, if you're not ready, send a letter. Sonya will post that, that you can make it.
Okay.
And then you don't have to come in the 26th, we'll continue it for you.
They'll need an extension, too. They, they're extended till 2/27, so if they don't make the next meeting, they'll need an extension.
Okay, we need a deadline extension.
On the, on the decision.
Until when, Chris? Let's, let's shoot for March 26th, to be safe.
Okay.
Yeah, please, deadline, decision extension till March 26th. Okay, did we vote this? All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
This is for, yeah, this has already been done, right? Let's continue.
This is the extension officially, we all agree.
I'm a lot of meds, I can't.
But it's to make a decision, Richard.
All right, very well. So, on the 26th.
Okay.
Thank you. It carries. All right, we're gonna, 54-24, the 2888 Cranberry Highway, the garage. Last time we left it, I don't know where the counselor is, I guess we agreed in everything except the fire department letter. And fortunately and unfortunately during this time, the guy approached me, "If I wanna look at the job," so I don't think it's fair for me to vote on it. You have Connor, he listened, so he could vote in my, in my, in my chair. So, you have Troy.
Was Connor a member of the board during the original, when this first came in?
He was here last time.
Yeah, but that was a continuation, right?
But last time wasn't the first time.
It started November 13th.
So, I guess there's four of you gotta vote.
Okay, one, two.
Three, four.
Okay, 'cause we don't have Veronica either.
It's not, I didn't take the job, but we discussed the outlines, so I don't think.
I'm okay with having Connor vote. Are you comfortable? This is the, this is the place across the street from, it used to be a Semoco Station, it's a Shell Station now, on Cranberry Highway, where the road comes together six or four years.
You were here last week.
Why don't you take, I'm, I'm good for saying yes, if he wants to go with the four, on my end.
No, no, we go four, because the first hearing, he wasn't.
Because I, I don't believe.
I put you on the hot seat.
You're starting to really.
Yeah, this started November 13th, is what I see here on the.
November 13th?
The hearings, yeah. November 13th, December 11th, January 8th.
I was on the air for the last meeting only, but this was also brought up, it just wasn't the first time.
Four members, understory. Jimmy, it's yours.
Okay. So, this is 5424 Yusef. Is there anybody here from Yusef? Anybody online from Yusef?
Nobody's raised their hand.
Okay. Mr. Cudero, have you heard anything regarding this that you need to add or tell us, or?
I haven't heard anything. The only outstanding matter was getting the fire department sign off, which I've not seen since the last meeting.
Okay. Then, then really, all we need to do is make a motion that, subject to a letter from the fire department approving access, we either approve or deny this application.
Or continue.
Or continue.
Until he brings it.
Do you wanna wait for, what do you guys wanna do? You wanna wait for the letter from the fire department?
I think you should wait, 'cause then you'll be chasing it.
Okay, make a motion to continue. Made by myself, the motion is to continue 5424 until 2/26/25. We are, time for decision on that matter.
Chris is the man for those.
It says, "Special Permit 211/2025. SPR 60 days from the close of the public hearing." So.
211?
No, there was a variance for the, they had a hardship in the front.
So, we've continued.
And the variance is, excuse me, it's a variance 100 days from the application. When was the application?
The first hearing was November 13th.
They're gonna need a, an extension, decision.
Yeah, yeah, he's got it right, 211, it was.
They need decision, deadline, extension as well, if you put it on your.
So, we're gonna, the, the, the motion was to extend this hearing until 2/26/25, and for the applicant to extend the time for the board to make a decision until 3/27/25.
March, let's shoot. Let's do March 26th for the deadline decision. Who knows?
That's what I said.
You said three, February, March, ah, I'm sorry, I'm losing my mind. It's too much bells.
It's continued 2/26. You still got five fingers on each ear.
I'm telling you, I haven't been myself, that's for sure.
Okay, so three, is it 26 or 27?
26 next hearing.
All right. 2/26 is the next hearing, the extension for the board is 3/27.
Correct.
Okay.
3/27 or 3/26 is their meeting. The same days this month and March are the same, the 12th and 26th.
It's just from February.
February to Mar, February to March, it's the same day. The 12th and the 12th, and 26th and the 26th, if I see it right.
You do. Okay. So, so the motion's been made that the applicant's gonna have to agree to the extent, time, the extension, which I don't think will be a problem. It's been seconded by Troy, I believe?
Yes. Or Rich, one of us.
All in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Okay, so we're extended. That's the end of Yusef for tonight.
Troy, Rick, same thing.
Hadney?
Troy, Rick, same thing, man.
Same amount of letters.
What'd they call you?
We're both good.
Did they call you Troy?
No.
Oh, Troy, Rick.
So, who's second in that story?
Yeah. All right. 66, 66-24.
I didn't call you anything.
Taunton Federal Credit Union, 2512 Cranberry Highway.
Taunton Federal Credit Union.
Good evening to Mr. Chairman.
Name another server.
Nelson Tavares, Taunton Federal Credit Union, 14 Church Green, Taunton, Massachusetts.
Okay, public hearing still open?
Yes, sir.
So, I got an email today that you haven't gotten back response from our consultant.
Yes, sir. We are in receipt of the peer review. We have had discussions with our engineer. We've already reviewed draft plans for all the necessary changes that were requested to be made. We believe we're in compliance with them, but we do not have finalized stamped plans. We intend on having them this week, so we are requesting a continuance here.
Okay. Anything you guys did not agree with our consultant that you might request a variance?
No, sir. We're complying with all the requests.
Agreed, okay, excellent. I like to hear this.
Ask Phil, he's online, ask him if he's got any.
Phil, you still there?
I'm still here, Mr. Chair.
Did you hear that?
They actually had a very strong application. A lot of their drainage infrastructure needed improvement.
Correct. He, he mentioned that we, he was looking for improvements in our drainage plan, and we.
And you agreed.
We already have a draft, it just has not been presented back to Phil.
You got that, Phil?
So, Phil's nodding, the applicant's nodding.
Yep, we intend to have.
Looking to continue. If you have the plan to us, if you have the plan to us within a week, that gives it to us a week before the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
And we can make a vote that meeting. That would be 2/26/25. Everybody's happy?
Well, there was a lot on that list I had to go through, so there was fire department issues.
The town engineer and the applicant have, have made nice-nice.
On that letter, it didn't seem nice-nice, but hey.
Well, not yet, but we will make nice-nice once we see what they submit back.
Mr. Cudero was saying something. Say it again, Phil?
We, we haven't seen the response, so we'll make nice-nice when it comes back.
Okay.
There you go, so nobody's nice-nice yet.
Okay, you haven't seen the response, so.
Okay, that being said, can we get a motion, continue till the 26th?
So moved.
Motion by Rich, second by Jim. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Deadline decision, master?
We're good.
We're good.
Still good on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Of course.
Have a good night.
6624. Okay, we're gonna move to the public hearing, 1-25, the first public hearing in 2025, 2 East Boulevard.
Veronica can be on this one.
She could be on this one. Let's see how long she'll last.
That'd be something that you'd expect out of a.
You know, I didn't call you today, I was ready to say, say nada.
I was gonna do a little email, "Yo, Ronnie."
No, I didn't, I didn't call her.
After last week, she's gonna be on it like a hornet.
Here's two of these, and all the way down to Connor. And one, two, three, this pasties all, no, don't keep one. Connor needs one. No, I got one for you right here.
Thank you.
You can have this one, I don't need it.
Thank you.
So, I think, Connor, this would be the first one that will be opened in front of you, so even, even though you're not.
Yes, I think that would be easier.
A voting member of, of this, if any one of these vote, five members are absent, you can sit in their place on a meeting or even at the final meeting during the vote, as long as you're here, for every meeting, just for clarification. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on February 12, 2025, at 6:30 PM, in room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. You consider petition number 1-25 for a variance, or variances, and a special permit for site plan review from the requirements of Article 10, Sections 1040, 1042, and 1060, and Article 15, Section 1520 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to 2 East Boulevard LLC, care of GAF Engineering to two East Boulevard LLC care of GAF Engineering, Inc., two sixty-six Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to reconfigure the parking lot and development expansion of off-street parking spaces along the perimeter of the property located at two East Boulevard, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Wareham Assessors Map, one, what, one zero one two A in the onset village one zoning district.
Name and address?
Bob Rogers, GAF Engineering, on behalf of the applicant.
John Cornish, owner of the property.
All right, let's hear it, Bob.
Do you want us to swear?
Not in this one, no.
You've already sworn at us.
I have.
We caught you cursing on the sidewalk and using our names.
Okay.
Is everybody here for this matter? Is there any attorneys for this matter here tonight?
Online?
Yeah, why don't you stand up and swear?
Okay, let's do it.
Question for me.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
All right, have a seat. All right, let's hear it.
So this is unique, Mr. Chairman, in that it's sort of like an after-the-fact site plan review filing. Mr. Cornish purchased the property in, I think, the early summer of two thousand twenty-three, and as everyone who's familiar with onset is aware, parking is at a premium in the summer. So Mr. Cornish purchased the property and we started looking at conceptual plans in the summer of two thousand twenty-three to improve both the alignment of parking around the property and to try and increase the number of spaces. So we came up with what you see now on this plan. All of the parking spaces on this plan are existing today. They were constructed in the fall of two thousand twenty-three. We filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission and we received an order of conditions after a public hearing to create these spaces. So we're before you tonight based on the letter that John received from the building commissioner. There was an original letter in August, but it took us some time to do an as-built survey and to produce the plan. So you have an updated letter from the commissioner in the application. At the time, when we were in permitting with conservation, the question came up as to whether or not we needed to go to the Streets Committee. And I reached out to the Planning Department and to the Director of Municipal Maintenance, and we were told that we didn't have to go, that we didn't have to go to the Streets Committee. And so also at the time, and it stands today, you know, there's no proposal to expand the building itself, the use of the building, or the, there's no change in use or expansion for the building. But we're here tonight in response to the building commissioner's letter, and you have a stormwater report from August of two thousand twenty-three. It was pretty simplistic in that part of the work on this project was removing a concrete deck. The parking spaces are all pervious, so it was pretty easy for us to comply with the redevelopment requirements of stormwater management. So, and we're here before the zoning board of appeals instead of the planning board because this, that one sideline that abuts residential property, we're showing a ten-foot space available for a landscape buffer and twenty feet is required from commercial to residential. So there's a lot of history with this lot. You know, Mr. Cornish knows a lot more about it than I do, but in my ten years at GAF, you know, one of the first jobs that I assisted with was the onset, the drainage improvements for Hotel Ocean, East Boulevard. And so I'm just familiar that there's always been parking around the perimeter of this property. It's been commercial for many years. And so the effect of what was constructed was to gain five spaces. We went from eighteen spaces available to twenty-three available. And so, you know, if anyone wants to look, we have these pictures that we took. It's actually screenshots of Google Earth street view. And so, you know, I basically, not to belabor it, but I took a look at these pictures and I saw eighteen spaces for sure. But, you know, so we're here, we're looking to make this right and to receive site plan review approval and receive an associated variance to allow a ten-foot landscape buffer to the residential property line instead of a twenty. And then, you know, things would be made right, I guess, procedurally within the town.
Let me ask you, is this used to be like a real estate office?
Yes.
Across from there's a marina right there?
So there's, yeah, so that's Conway, it was a Jack Conway office.
Fish market, that's the one?
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, and what's the business now gonna be?
So it's office space right now.
It's empty. It's still gonna be commercial, whatever it is, but really, I bought it for the parking. We have the Stonebridge Marina across the street.
Oh, you own the marina?
I own the marina also.
Okay, so you bought it, you needed, okay, 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 I got it now. I saw, you don't know what kind of business, I didn't know you're the marina owner. So you bought it to gain parking for your marina?
And for the restaurant. At the time, you remember, at the time, we were losing parking because the parking was, the traffic was constricted by the parking in front of the building.
Right.
So that's been eliminated
Right.
Easily now, and, you know,
Okay.
We're using the parking across the street very successfully. There's no, there's no problems there now.
Okay, so you gotta bear with me, I just, for me, the first time I look at it. So the variance you want is the buffer between this and the neighbors?
Correct.
The tree buffer, I mean, the landscaping buffer.
Ten feet versus twenty feet?
Right.
Correct.
Let me ask you something, that's a natural buffer. Because it's not natural, are you willing to put extensive landscaping there if the board wishes to give you a variance?
It's there. The neighbor has it there.
What do you mean has it there?
What do you got, abreviatey?
It's a hedge.
A hedge?
No, no, in your land, what's in your land right now in that ten foot?
Grass.
Grass. Okay, if we, if the board, I don't know, I'm just speaking out Right, if I'm speaking out loud, say the neighbor says, well, we need more screening, and the board says, I wanna give you a variance, we'll give you a variance, but we want you to put a bunch of trees to help the neighbor though, maybe high abrevieties, who knows, trees, whatever.
Yeah.
We're just the beginning now, but this is a question, it might pop out.
So one of the options that we had was that we're showing on the plan in front of you a six-foot stockade or vinyl fence along the property line. And plantings, we're saying plantings coordinate with the owner, but you certainly
For me, I personally don't like fences. I like trees.
We don't either, but
If the, to give a variance and the neighbor says, yes, we want the fence and trees, we might have to go this way to grant you the variance. What other variance you need?
I'm not aware of anyone.
Commissioner letter, correct, but I didn't really get it because
Yeah, well, we're not asking for anything other than that, other than what was identified in the building commissioner's letter, and, you know, there was an allegation of parking within the layout, which is just a, it's just a visual, you know, because of the pavement in front of the office building, it seems like it's like right up against the intersection of the road, but all of these spaces are within the property, so.
Is that, excuse me? Is that currently all paved? Is it dirt? Is it white shells? What is it?
It's all paved in the front.
Oh, and what about around the side, right up the street?
We had, what we added and constructed was crushed stone parking. So that's the front, you know, now, and that's the front back when it was the Jack Conway office.
Yeah.
But the parking that we reconfigured is all crushed stone. We took away a little bit of concrete. We didn't add any pavement.
But according to the commissioner letter,
Yep.
You're gonna be, you have over ten cars?
So the issue is, no matter how many spaces
You propose an over ten cars to park?
We had eighteen.
I can see it.
So we had eighteen, we went, we now have twenty-three, but that doesn't matter if, but, you know, the language that I'm a little more focused on, you know, you can have twenty spaces and reconfigure and still only have twenty spaces, and you need to come to site plan review if you're expanding your business, the building, and if you're, or changing the use. So we're not changing the use of the property. We're not expanding the building to create more commercial space, but we're just trying to create additional parking to serve the existing commercial and the restaurant across the street on different hours, you know, this
That creates
So anyway, but we're here, and so it's not an issue
You know what, let me ask the commissioners, does that create site plan or no?
I used the site near maps to look at the site over the past five-year period. I couldn't come up with eighteen spots. I think my letter says it was twelve, and they were proposing thirteen. So they might have had eighteen spots parking on the grass, but it wasn't spots. They just, it was just willy-nilly they parked.
At the time, so.
And then when they cut the trees down, I think that's how they added it, but there was, I couldn't come up with eighteen spots.
May I address that?
But, yeah, once, but my understanding between what he's saying, you saying, it is site plan, it's over ten cars. Go ahead, sir.
So there was, before, before I was even there, there was a bait shop, a dive shop in the back, and it was real estate in the front. And there was, the bait, the dive shop was a nautical kind of place, so they put pilings and ropes, big, great big diameter rope, and they made parking spaces on all the grass. And they were still there in these pictures. And so the dive shop always parked there, the, way back when it was Bessie's Clam Shack, it was, there was a loading dock there, there was parking everywhere. It was the busiest fish place.
How many square feet is that building? That fish market or real estate office?
No, exactly. It's probably
Roughly.
Three thousand, maybe?
Is it that big? One to me, thanks.
Do you mind if I make a comment? So I'm sitting here and I'm listening, and what I'm hearing is not what's being said. So I wanna ask if what I'm hearing is correct, or is what's being said more accurate? What I'm hearing is we wanna avoid site plan review and call the vacant building, an office building, not being used. Is that correct?
No, I would say no. What I, my statement was, we may have disagreements about the interpretation of the code, but we're here willingly, we filed a site plan review application, we would like to be approved under this application, get our approval for site plan review, and
So you want to see, you're looking to go through site plan review?
This is, well, this is what we're doing tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So I was, I thought I was hearing an attempt to avoid site plan review or mitigate it or end around it.
No, well, so
That's why I asked.
A complaint was filed and the town responded to the complaint, and here we are, that's all.
So you're saying roughly three thousand square feet? But how many, how many square feet is that building, Josh?
I think I had a
It says twenty-four eighty-four, right?
All right. If we, if we call twenty-four, if it's a, if it's a retail, you need only like, if it's a restaurant, you need six parking spaces or seven.
I got twenty-four fourteen.
If it's a service, like a hair salon, what's that?
I'm looking at the property card, it's got
If it's a hair salon or like service, you need every three hundred square feet of spot, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. So you need eight cars. So at the most, this building calls, at the most, ten parking spaces. And you propose an eighteen?
Twenty-three.
We had eighteen and we created
How did you have eighteen?
Twenty-three.
To park eighteen?
So, so they weren't all ten by twenty spaces, but if you go around the property, so there's six.
Bob, 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 I understand, I understand, but is there a site plan somewhere in racket show, and they used to be eighteen?
No, no, because
This is thirty years old.
I understand, I understand. If you are to come to this building, what's the most used that requires parking lot? Hair salon, what's the most?
Most intensive use should probably be food service.
Food service? That's three hundred square feet per parking lot?
But if he called it a marine supply, if he was selling fishing poles and worms?
That's five hundred, that's only five parking spaces that's allowed for that building.
So as John was, you know, so there's parking spaces during the day that, you know, he needs for this building, and then at night and on the weekends, because he owns both properties, he can
I totally understand. I understand what you're saying, but there's no such thing, approval, eighteen parking spaces. I'm not saying I'm not gonna say yes for you. I, I mean, I, any project that could help parking there, I'm for it personally. I don't know about the board, I'm willing to help.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is a photo of what the property looked like prior to the installation of the parking spaces.
That corner?
This is April eighth of two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah.
Going to, this is April tenth of two thousand twenty-four, so a year later.
Okay.
And I could show you some historic images where there are cars parked at the property, just to give you
Car park, it's irrelevant. I mean, if they park, they park, it doesn't mean it's set on stone, they allowed that. Bottom line, you have to go to a site plan, drainage and all this if you require over ten spaces. If you want more spaces, apparently you lose a lot of pervious area, so you need, what's the lot coverage there? Forty percent, thirty percent? What's a lot coverage there? It should be on that plan somewhere.
Well, okay.
Impervious coverage, seventy percent?
Correct.
So you could have, and how much you proposing?
We're not proposing any changes at all to the site other than landscaping, because it's already all constructed. And all the, all the parking that we added is crushed stone pervious parking.
Ah, it's, so it's not paved, it's crushed stone?
Correct.
You know, I, let me think about it, let me get some more ideas from the board. Troy?
I have no comment.
Veronica, you familiar with the area? What do you think?
Anybody that knows the area just knows that the parking is
Understand this, but I'm
I'd like to hear what the neighbors want.
I know, but what do you think of all this, to grant all these parking spaces, the gravel, this and that?
I don't know, are they actually parking spaces just because they put crushed shell there? Do they techni, I mean, is it a legal parking space because you put crushed shell down and said, I'm gonna let you park here?
Well, yeah, I see it was unpermitted parking spots, and now they're coming to get permitted parking spots, is what I get out of it, right?
Now, if that case what Richard said, you're gonna have to go site plan, and you have to pave it, and you got a variance, and you got drainage and all this if you wanna permit it. If you crush stone and go park, what I'm hearing, you go park, I mean, I'm not gonna go there, police you, and we understand this two months, everybody gotta suffer parking in onset, like or not, two, three months. The rest of the year, mosquitoes don't wanna go there, it's empty. So this two, three months, everybody gotta work with everybody. Some people like it, some people don't like it. I'm still there, not there, that's why I wanna go to the board, I'm still there adjusting what you really want and how we're really gonna approach it. Jimmy, you coming?
My question, what if he came to us and said, I wanna tear the building down and put forty spaces there and make it a parking lot?
So you can't do a parking lot without a structure in Wareham?
Can't do a parking lot without a structure in Wareham?
Without a structure attached to it. It's gotta be in it. I know he has a business across, and this is what we're going with
What if he, what if he joined the properties? What if he made it all under one
He has a road in between.
So what?
If he came for a variance, no.
Well, what we did, you know
You need a variance, exactly.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not
Right, right.
I'm trying to figure out
This is what happened waterways, they bought the lot.
Yeah.
And they wanna park a lot, and you can't do this. I mean, we talk, I mean
They have to, well, they have to annex it to their existing property and then
Next door. There's a lot of options, a lot of options. Richard, what do you think?
Well, what question is, what's to stop him from making that building a restaurant or anything?
He can, no
You'd have to apply for a building permit.
So
Let him, yeah
So that, I mean, I know it's vacant now, but we don't know what the future holds, so
Right, if you, if you make it a restaurant, it's twenty-five hundred square feet, you only need like six parking spaces. If require six or seven, you can say, you know what, I wanna put twenty. You can't put extra without a variance, you can't just put extra spaces because you wish.
Mm-hmm. And then, and then secondly, when were these pitches taken? Obviously, there's leaves on the trees.
So all of these are before the project was, was constructed?
And you're telling me there's no more parking in front of the
So, well, no, so all this does is it just, again, it just
Okay, that's, again, so there's no more parking in front of the Stone Bridge? You're telling me
Yes, they're reconfigured
Because he sent, his statement, his statement to the board was
That's before the, I'm saying it's not in the street, it's on private property. There was an allegation made that these cars parked in front were within the town's right-of-way, and they're not within the right-of-way, they're on
Incorrect statement, I get you.
They're on private property. So from a complaint from one neighbor, we, here we are at this point tonight.
Okay.
After we had been through the Conservation Commission and had our public hearing and requested if we needed to go before the Streets Commission, and we were told, no, you do not need to go before the Streets Commission, and no one asked us to go before site plan review, and we agreed because we weren't seeking a building permit, we were not requesting a change in use for the building, and we were not requesting an expansion of the use of the building. So we thought we were legitimately exempted from the site plan review process.
Right, we're just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, exactly, we're just trying to get
I went by there at one point when you were cutting the trees down, and I did see some town people there that were having a pow-wow with you at some point, so I do know that the town, you did, you did involve some part of the town, so.
The Conservation Commission and the Streets Commission?
Yep.
Conservation because they were caught within a hundred feet of the water. All right, let me go through Chris first. Chris?
I'd like to hear, I guess, what the neighbors have to say.
Connor?
I don't have any comment right now. Jimmy?
So my new question is, all these things are rolling through my head. Our chair commented the number of square feet, based on the number of square feet, how many cars you'd need to park there. Our chair commented the number of square feet, based on the number of square feet, how many cars you'd need to park there. On, on another matter, totally unrelated to this, the occupancy permit for a restaurant was based on the number of avail, of available parking spaces. So how do we con, how do we consider how many parking spaces go to a restaurant? Is it based on the number of seats? Is it based on the number of parking spaces?
Seats.
Is it based on the square footage? What's it based on?
Every five seat chairs, one car, every three chairs on the bar, one car. Table five, one. Three seats on a bar, one.
So based on what you said.
No, he said, he's saying no.
One spot per five seats for a restaurant.
The bar also five. Okay, so five, so every five people.
So every parking spot gets you five head?
Five heads, yes.
Okay.
I saw the bar is different.
So, but, but your earlier comment, and I'm not challenging either, I'm trying to understand. Your earlier comment on 2,500 square feet was five spaces as a restaurant.
No, I, listen, I'm talking about retail, I was saying. Retail is.
Retail is 200.
200 square feet service, 300.
Okay.
There's, there's some, it needs a car for 200, some for 300, you understand?
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, he wants 18 spaces, if it's 18.
What's the less restriction, Commissioner?
I mean, 23 spaces.
You could get, let's, let's say, what's the least?
What's the most generous, is that what you're trying to say?
All right, hold on. Yep.
I mean, as a restaurant with 23 parking spaces, five times 23, that's 100 and what? 115 people could go in that restaurant?
So business retail greater than 1,000 square feet is one per 300.
So.
So they'd only need 10 spots.
So they'll only need 10 spots. But answering your question, if you could put 100 people there, you need 20 spaces, you're right.
Okay, and that's showing that they can put 23 there?
Yeah, I guess you could fit in 2,500 square feet, 100 people restaurant, right? Easily.
14 square feet per person for the dining room.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you could easily put 100 people, right? You have a restaurant.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
It's funny, the history is really weird on this whole area. But I was required to go, I think it was to go in front of the planning board. In order to have the porch on the back of the restaurant, I had to lease parking spots from this property that I now own. So that they would approve my expansion of the restaurant across the street.
Because you have so many customers.
Well, yeah, it was necessary, yeah, for so many seats.
Right.
So all I'm, all I did when we made this change is neatened up a mess. We were using it, we're parking on dirt instead of gravel.
Yeah.
It looked like absolute crazy, awful.
Right.
And we neatened it up, organized it and made it so it could be maintained and.
All right, let's go again. What bring you here tonight? How did that happen?
One more question though. So if we, if we were talking about properties being to get, joined together.
Yeah.
And you said, there's a street in between them. How do these two get put together if they're not connected?
When he leased, when he leased the parking.
Well, I'm just saying now.
It's not together.
It's what?
It's not, you mean it was his marina?
No, I'm just saying, he's got parking for the stone bridge. He's looking for parking for this stone bridge. There's a street in between them and then there's a house. I'm confused on your remark about having to be joined together.
Right. I'll explain to you. If, if, if it's, they say there's no building in this lot. You can just build the parking and lease it. But there is a building, he could lease the parking spots from them because there's a structure. But if it's an empty lot, he can't say, you know what, I wanna go make a parking lot, but he'll need a variance. If you recall the dispensary on Main Street before Warren made this building, they made a parking and they needed a variance. And we didn't give it to them because there's no structure. But because there's a structure and there's parking, he can lease from them. That's why he was able to lease from them. And now because he owns both of them, of course he could park in it because it's his, he doesn't have to lease it.
So let me, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
You answered my question.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question. Suppose he.
You answered my question.
Suppose he tears the building down and puts a Kodak photo booth in there. That's a structure. And he lets them drive through and pull up to the window and drop off their film for developing. And he puts in 50 parking spaces. He's got a structure.
Yeah, but then if you wanna get technical.
There's a lot of people getting film developed.
Right, but then, now listen to me. Then it doesn't warrant so many parking.
My mother worked for him. I haven't seen anything like.
Well, you know, I mean.
It doesn't warrant so many parking.
You're walking on it. Everybody's walking around with a camera or a phone. They're all taking pictures. They all need to be developed.
Let's, let's get serious.
I am serious.
A telephone, whatever you call it, camera booth, it doesn't warrant so many parking.
Kodak photo booth?
It doesn't warrant so many parking. Let's not go that far. So what brought you here tonight? A complaint, apparently.
So at the end of the building commissioner's letter, there is a remedy to.
What? Well, how did, how did?
So there was one person who filed a complaint through the online town system.
Right.
And, and, you know, made a false accusation of parking within the right of way at the intersection. And just otherwise objecting and, and requesting that a site plan review be required by the town.
And the commissioner went there and he sent you that.
So the commissioner wrote the letter that you have and, and he wrote what he wrote. And there's a remedy at the end of that letter and we're, we're availing ourselves of the remedy.
One step at a time because like I said, we just learned this. Let's hear from the commissioner, what, how he came up with that letter. So commissioner, why don't you tell us the story?
I respond.
You got called, you went visit.
Yeah, and I did some research online and I determined that there's maybe a dozen spots there. And so that they already built the 23 spots, so that's an increase of 10. So that triggered site plan review. And then the residential neighborhood, it's been a while since I've done, I think it's 20 feet is required and they only had 10.
But the 10 existed forever.
I get it.
Right.
But they, they added 10 spots.
They added 10 spots. Okay, so then we start from scratch when you.
Start from scratch, yeah.
So now it's site plan review. But site plan review, in site plan review, apparently to have so many parking lot, you're gonna have a pervious, you're gonna have a variance.
Say that again?
In the site plan, if you wanna park, we, we're not gonna allow gravel driveway on, and, and site plan with drainage and all that. It's gonna be paved. So your coverage and impervious coverage gonna change.
So I would, I would disagree with that. We just had a discuss, or you just had a discussion on another project where a pervious roadway was perfectly permissible.
No, 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 you, you notice we had the issue that's not, it wasn't on the question.
Yes, well, so again, this is not a parking lot. You're not gonna plow these spaces. This is pull off the road, off-street parking, like the rest of the village in Onset.
Off-street parking?
Except it's on private property. It's not a parking lot. But we very much wanna get to a point where you can approve this as for the site plan review. And, and approve the variance with whatever stipulations for that one small landscape buffer.
All right. Just for clarification, this is completely, that's a bad example. The other property, they don't own it, nobody knows who owned it. That's completely separate.
Crushed stone parking is acceptable.
In the town bylaws?
You know, on redevelopment. I, I know we did 176 Main Street, which has crushed stone in the back. Or, you know, anyone we can.
Which one? Danny Warren's?
Anyone can look at, at the site.
Danny's kid, crushed stone in the back.
In the back.
Okay. Well, anyway, regardless, regardless, we don't make this call. It goes to our town consultant and he'll tell us if that's the case or not. So we're not gonna argue this matter. You know, we, we just understand. You're probably right and that's fine with us, fine with me. It doesn't bother me whether you put concrete, asphalt.
Well.
Whatever.
The prior condition was pulling onto dirt, pulling onto a lawn, having the employees stack and, because they could. And, and now it's crushed stone, it's better defined, it's pull in, pull out and.
I agree. I agree, but we wanna make sure the, the town engineer agree, the commissioner agrees, the board agrees. And somehow take into consideration the neighbors.
So that's fine. We have a complete site plan review application. We have a drainage report. We've checked all the boxes and so.
Did you open a 53G account?
No, sir.
All right, well, so that's one thing we need to have our town consultant review it and get back to us. Because we're not, none of us is an engineer and this is not our job to review it. So that's why we sub it. That's not your first.
But just so, he will be reviewing plans that don't show any new construction?
And then he'll get back to us. He might tell us, hey, it's fine.
Okay.
And if he come back, he says, you know what, you're gonna do such and such and such, we're gonna have to ask you, we need such and such and such. If he comes back and he says, his plan is good, but it warrants only 20 parking spaces and you need three, you're gonna need a variance for three. If he comes back, says the drainage, the drainage doesn't check, the drainage doesn't check, so we have to listen to what he says.
I understand.
Okay? Before we go to the public, the board wanna say anything?
I, I guess I have a question for the building commissioner. So he said that they added 10 more spaces and that's what triggered the site plan review?
Correct.
If they would have added nine spaces, would that have triggered a site plan review?
No.
But.
I still maintain, we only added five.
I thought they already, they had 18.
Yeah, I disagree. I went down there, I, I've done research online. I can bring the photographs on the next meeting. When I walked through that site, I couldn't find, I said, I'm guessing these are a dozen spots, if that. You have pictures of the site. I mean, it's this willy-nilly, was this a, a lot that you draw up in the grass or the asphalt or whatever was there? There was no rhyme or reason.
Correct.
I walked it, I don't know, probably half dozen times and paced it off. And I said, that's all that's here. You say no new construction, but there was new construction. So the trees were cut and then material was, was removed at the back, I believe, to make the, the spots. You created them.
Well, yeah, yes, we're after.
Before you just drove up on the existing lot?
Right, no, after, right, after we got the.
So there was new construction?
Yes, it was.
Okay, well, you just stated that there wasn't.
This, right, right now, tonight, for this site plan review.
Because it's already been built. This is after the fact.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So, you good? So we go to the public?
One more question.
Yeah.
What's your long-term plans for the building?
Wait for retail to be, to be in demand again. Then I'll renovate it to whatever, whatever someone wants. It was a real estate office in the front and it was a dive shop in the back, then it was a gift shop in the back. Originally, the whole building was a fish house.
I remember.
It was the largest fish wholesaler.
Roy Bessie Fish, I remember.
And they had, there was a big dig out, dugout in the back area that we smoothed over and made look nice because it looked like absolute.
So your, your long-term plan is to collect rent? If you're gonna do anything with that building?
I would think so.
You don't wanna operate a business in that structure at this moment?
I don't have it. My heirs might have something to do with that, but I don't have any idea.
No, Outboard Motor Shop, no?
We have more we can handle up on the.
No annex to Red Top? You wanna collect rent?
Who knows?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, whatever they do, they're gonna have to come back.
Been almost two years and there's been no rent. That's, the parking in Onset.
I didn't mean that the rent was a motivating factor. I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
It's all about parking.
All you want is the parking spaces. I get it.
I happen to have a building on it that I'm heating and maintaining, but, but it's about parking.
Yeah.
Onset's about parking.
Yeah.
And I did something about it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, could I ask one thing? So before we open it up to the public, does Mr. Cordero have an opinion about how much money he would need for the 53G account? Can we resolve that while he's still online?
Who said this, Josh? Who said that?
Phil gives us a quote.
Phil will give us an estimate. I, I would think.
Well, he's, he's seen this, the hearing, so, I mean, we'll certainly provide him with the material.
Phil, what do you think to start with?
I just wanna.
So, Mr. Chairman, what we do is we give sort of a standard fee because it's based on an hourly rate. So we would allocate $2,500 to start the 53G account for this.
Okay, and then it goes inspection, construct, it might go up to, I've seen it happen, end up being 10 grand, the bill by the time, it's a bigger project. You understand? So it's not 25 cents.
We're, we're hoping to avoid any construction inspections.
Right, and you might get money back, who knows, you know?
Yes.
All right, so you need 53G. We need to hear from him and now we're gonna go to public. In the public, anyone in favor of this project before we go against? I know you guys are all against. Anyone in favor?
There is a letter that I put in the system. There's a letter on file from Mr. Philip, what's his name? Philip.
Easy a butter with the.
I don't have the copy with me. I submitted it to the.
You got one neighbor in favor. He's in a butter.
Easy a butter with the hedge.
Behind you, behind the grass.
Philip Charlton, Philip Charlton submitted a letter.
How many are butters near the grass? One, two, three?
Just one.
No, two.
Two, so him, the okay one, and there's one against, I'm assuming.
Bessie family who sold me the property.
Okay, they, they okay, and there's one more. I'm sure they're here tonight. Okay, now who's against in the public? Who wants to speak against this project? Okay, one at a time, wanna come forward, please? Grab a chair, state your name.
Yeah, I'll just, we'll, we'll just sit in the back and let them, and they can look at the plans, whatever they need.
Yeah. Please come forward, have it sit on a chair. State your name and address.
Good evening. Hannah Benoit, East Boulevard.
Yeah. And you live right behind them?
I think she said her name and her address, but it was before the microphone caught it.
I'm sorry. 18 East Boulevard. I'm not in a butter.
18 East Boulevard.
I'm not a direct a butter, but I'm about eight houses down.
Eight houses down, okay.
And I believe.
And your name is Maureen?
No, Hannah.
Hannah?
B E N O I T.
Hannah Benoit, okay.
If you wish. First of all, I had some prepared remarks, but I believe that the bylaws stipulate that if you make changes that result in more than 10 spaces, you have to go for a site plan review.
Okay.
Regardless of the number of spaces that were there before.
Okay.
But I do believe that there were, as Mr. Turner, Mr. Turner said, there were not 18 spaces there before they cut down the trees on the west side of the property.
Yeah.
I think they did that without Conservation Commission approval and they went for the approval after they did it. And then they created additional spaces over there. The other thing that's really important to not remember is, I urge you all to go down and take a look at the site because that front part, the triangle there and the, that point is not gravel. It's paved. It always has been paved.
It's always, that's true.
There were, when it was a real estate agent, which is the last thing I remember, there were just a few angle parking spaces in the front. Now. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. So as you know, that in August 2024, the town issued a violation notice requesting the owner of 2 East Boulevard apply for a variance and a special permit for site plan review, quote, or decommission the newly created spots within 30 days of receipt of this letter, close quote. The property owner did not decommission the parking spaces and did not apply for a variance until December 2024. And the parking spots are still in use as of February 2025. So it's a classic case of it's easier to ask forgiveness than permission, which they should have been asking for. I object to the project for several reasons. First of all, there are serious public safety hazards. In July 2022, Onset Fire Chief Jeffrey Oswald stated it is, quote, "Sometimes impossible," close quote, "for emergency vehicles to navigate the intersection due to parking and the narrowness of the top of 11th Street," which is one of the streets coming in. Chief Oswald expressed this concern long before this additional parking lot was established at 2 East Boulevard, which is further obstructing the flow of traffic at the intersection. The site is surrounded by historic wooden structures on 11th Street and East Boulevard and all around from the 1800s. The fire risk in this neighborhood is catastrophic. We would hate to have a fire, a fire equipment trying to get down 11th Street and turn around that intersection when it was already nearly impossible before these extra spaces were put in. I primarily object to the ones that are in the front there, that are on the street, because it's against.
Let me stop you a second. You're talking about that corner right there?
Yes.
Just point it for us. That corner right there, for, no.
East Boulevard.
Yeah.
Ocean Avenue.
Which corner are you talking, right there?
Right there.
So that, the fire truck has a problem going where?
Coming down.
Here?
They're not showing, here is 11th, right here.
Yeah.
Coming down here.
Yeah.
And having to go up East Boulevard. And now here are all parking spaces here. These cars have to back out onto a public way. These cars have to back out onto a public way.
Come on.
In order to get out of the spaces. And that poses a danger right there to oncoming vehicles and to pedestrians. Do you understand?
Is coming and going back, there's only one road there, or there's two roads there?
Well, actually, if you think about it, there are four streets coming together.
She's talking about even from 11th that they have to try and get them down.
What I got out of her conversation was the 11th onset East Boulevard.
Now, the fire station's up on Cranberry Highway, right?
Yeah.
So if I were a fire engine driver, I would wanna come down Main Avenue.
Yeah.
Cut through, go down 11th, and then come around East Boulevard where all the wooden houses are. They would have to go through town and around Ocean, I mean, I'm sorry, that's supposed to be onset Boulevard, isn't it?
Ocean, Ocean Avenue.
Ontet Avenue, yeah, to get through, but that's another matter.
Yeah, but how does it, what does the parking effects going from 11 Ave to East Boulevard? How this property affects that?
Well, it affects it because there are parking spots right there that were, used to be the grass spots.
Yeah, so the fire truck could, so the fire truck could drive on the grass, you're saying, and make it big?
No, they wouldn't, but there might be cars coming and going. And this is an intersection...
They'd have to blow the sirens.
To move over. I mean, on the highway, there's cars going, and the fire truck have to put the horn to move.
You know, I don't mean to be flippant with you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that in a mean, in a mean way, but...
And if they used to use the dirt, this is not the fire department road, they could build a wall, and they could never use it legally. I don't see the block, I'm not trying to stick up for the owner, but that specific word you said, for the fire department to go from 11 to East Boulevard, is irrelevant to this whole thing, I don't see.
I think it's relevant, because as you come down 11th, you come out of 11th Street, the parking spaces are right there.
Yeah, I see them here on the plan. But they're in his property, not on the road, they're in private...
Not on the road, but they have to back up onto the public right away to get out of the spots.
Everybody have to back up to public.
No, on the driveway, but not in the parking lot.
Okay.
If we can ask the onset firemen in the crowd?
Excuse me, Connor?
Isn't there a fireman in the audience that we could ask about the situation?
Fireman here?
Yep. Yeah, they raised, been here.
Okay, we'll get to you, sir, but let her finish her comment. Okay, come forward, come forward. Just state your name and your rank, please. Have a seat, have a seat.
Lieutenant Snaga from the onset fire department, I'm the fire prevention officer for the district.
Yeah. So you tell me, how do you see this project would affect your truck?
The way that everything is now, I don't have an issue with it, the way it used to be with the parking all along the front of the building across the street, 5 East Boulevard, then I did have issues with that.
You mean the marina and the restaurant?
The marina and the restaurant, correct. When they used to back-to-back the real estate office at the time, and the parking from the restaurant, they did create a bottleneck there. I could not, on many occasions, fit any of my large vehicles down there. Once that was changed, which is now no parking area along that front area of the restaurant, that opened that, widened that area up.
That helped?
That did help, it helped amazingly.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they are, they are still parking in front of the restaurant.
I understand, let the gentleman, the lieutenant...
The question is that the current plan is...
Well, I have the floor, but...
Let the lieutenant finish. So you're saying, when moving, you have to leave?
I'm trying to see what they're doing right now, sorry. It would just happen to be at this point in time.
Because I remember the restaurant, they used to park very hard.
Exactly, they used to park all the way down to the end of the building to where that setback parking was.
And now, when they did this parking, it helped tremendously, because they parked in that.
Correct, they eliminated that parking.
Yeah.
And that, that has opened up. I have not had any difficulties driving my apparatus through there since that time. Also, even since the parking has been put out on the street, I mean, across the street in the property of the, of number two East Boulevard, I have not had any trouble parking there, driving through there as well. On my way home every night, I drive through that way, and I have not had an issue with it, short of somebody stopping to let somebody out to go into the restaurant or something like drop-off parking and moving on. The thing that created the opening was originally just removing the parking in front of the restaurant across the street. That solved that whole problem, once that was done. There are still a couple of spots out there, I believe handicap spots, that are still in front of it, allowing handicap persons to be able to make access to the restaurant. But, yeah, no, I mean, from the fire department's standpoint, we don't have an issue with this anymore.
All right, thank you, Lieutenant, for your time, I know you guys busy, thank you. Going back to you, ma'am, go ahead.
The handicap spot in front of the restaurant does not conform to standards that are set by law, just saying that.
The handicap, what restaurant?
I go by that all the time, and there's still...
The restaurant on the water, the handicap, I mean, this is not before us, so I'm, not to be rude, but this is none of our business right now, this is not before us, so there's something you have to bring to ADA, you have to bring to the commissioner, write a complaint, they'll come right away, believe me. If you say it's not in compliance, they'll be there tomorrow.
Well, I'll do that.
Yeah, okay.
But my point is that the overall traffic in the intersection is exacerbated by these additional spots.
Okay.
And that is a very busy intersection, especially in the summertime. There are no sidewalks, so people have to walk through the intersection to get down to the beach, to get to the restaurants, to get to the Stone Bridge, to walk down Ontet Avenue to town, and it's very, very busy. Massachusetts law prohibits parking less than 10 feet, within 10 feet of an hydrant, yet the applicant has marked parking spaces just a few feet from a hydrant on the east side of the building, at 2 East Boulevard. There are bollards surrounding the hydrant, but that does not negate the fact that they, the spots are parking, the people who park there are parking illegally and too close to the hydrant for safe emergency access. Now, there are also violations of zoning bylaws on landscaping, which have been touched upon. Article 1060 Parking Lots requires landscaping for the purpose of reducing a lot's visibility from the street. This is incredibly ugly and unappealing, I have to tell you. For example, quote, "Along the perimeter of the parking lot, a landscape strip shall be provided, planted with shade trees and low shrubs," closed quote. No such landscaping buffer exists at 2 East Boulevard. And I'm not talking about the residential one, I'm talking about that triangle in the front with seven spaces. Plus jersey barriers, plus a sign that says, "Parking for Stone Bridge Bistro only." Violators will be towed, and they have towed people. Four old growth oak trees were cut down on the property without prior Conservation Commission approval. Similarly, Article 1040 of the bylaws requires a 20-foot landscape buffer between commercial developments and adjacent residences, which we were, which you were discussing earlier. Property owner has intensified the use of both sites beyond what they were originally permitted for, leading to the claimed parking shortage. At 5 East Boulevard, the property owner has expanded the marina, enclosed the restaurant's deck in violation of a 2012 special permit, established a boat rental operation, gouged out the bluff, and installed picnic tables, advertising them as dockside dining. Which means that the need for parking and the so-called parking shortage is self-created situation. At 2 East Boulevard, there's space for a retail shop and perhaps another potential business, I don't know, but that would create need for additional parking. In brief, any parking shortage is a direct result of the owner's business decisions, not a hardship imposed by the land itself. Nearly all other businesses in onset village district lack dedicated on-street parking, and they rely on public lots. There's no justification for granting an exception for this business, especially given the inherent and clear risks to public safety. This project poses a detriment to the public good, raising serious safety, environmental, and zoning concerns, so I urge the board, the zoning board of appeals, to reject this variance and special permit request to protect the community's safety, zoning integrity, and the public trust. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, before we go, just to answer a quick question for you. You talk about the hydrant, that's what site plan does, so our town engineer will come back, if he says it's 10 feet, it's 10 feet, and the fire department will have to sign off before we give them a permit, if we wish to.
It's definitely not.
I don't know, it may not be 10 feet, I don't know, we don't know that.
I think I can eyeball 10 feet, it's less than, it's like 3 feet.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm not arguing with you, I'm telling you what's, how does that work? If you wanna keep listening, or you wanna walk away?
I'll hand out some documents.
You have to ask to do this, if I allow you to, yes.
Will you talk, will you allow me?
So whatever the town engineer come up with, we'll follow the rules. If they say 20 feet, guess what, it's 20 feet.
That makes sense.
You know, so this is not, that's why we hired this town consultant to give us this. On the landscape, and like you said, there should be trees and whatever. Thank you. On the street, that again...
Sure. Thank you.
So in the landscape, and like you said, has to be like trees, whatever shade, this again falls on the, on the site plan review. So again, our consultant will come back, say it's missing trees, this and that.
Okay.
No, make no mistake, let's say, for instance, the consultant says, he's supposed to put, say, 20 trees, and he asked for 18, we have the power to give him variance for 18, if we wish to.
Sure.
As a buffer in the back, for the buffer, the 20 feet, that again, I understand you said 20, the law is 20, and I'm sure our consultant gonna come back, says it's 20. And if the board feel there's a hardship for the property and it needs that 10 feet, the board, if they agree, and it's super majority, not a simple majority, can grant him a variance. So this is the answer for your question, the time and the studies and town consultant will come back with all the answers.
Sure.
Before we step into conclusion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If this, if our decision should be approved, should be appealed, and this went to a court of law, and this document was included in the file, how would the judge contact onset
Well, you're welcome to use our neighborhood...
If somebody wants, somebody, somebody needs to put their name on this. Somebody's either the author...
That's what he's trying to get to.
Somebody's, somebody's either the author...
Right.
Or the signator, or some, the onset neighbors, I could, I could write up War and Peace and say, "From the people of Massachusetts."
Okay.
But it doesn't mean anything.
I'll have to think about that, because there are some people who hesitate...
So if you decide you want this in the folder, have somebody come to the town hall and put a name on this, onset neighbors isn't something that I can put in the folder.
I understand.
Thank you.
Because if, unfortunately, if there's a lawsuit filed, we need a name...
Right.
To subpoena you.
Of course.
As a witness.
Right.
Onset neighbor.
No, no, I understand that.
We have to subpoena 5,000 people.
I understand, I...
Okay, so any letter has to have a name, address, telephone number, all these things.
Of course.
Okay?
There's more than one people, one person working on this?
There's one guy should be responsible, or person, lady, guy, whatever it is, has to be responsible to be contacted, the author of it.
Right, I got it, I got it.
You know, the manager of it, whatever you call it.
Sure.
So, again, this is not gonna be the last hearing, and more hearing will come, we'll have to hear from our consultant, and it will go on and on, trust me, it's not gonna be done tonight.
We'll drag it out, we'll try to make it last until 2020, 37, or something like that.
Okay.
By then, the guy will be sick of it, and you know...
Meanwhile, the spots should be decommissioned, because they're not approved.
Yeah, maybe the neighbors will change and have a different attitude, who knows, they might want it torn down.
Anyway, next...
That is an intersection, and it's against Massachusetts law to park within 20 feet of an intersection. So that's really a very important point as well.
And which law is that, chapter what, and section what?
Doesn't matter, that's fine, we don't have jurisdiction to go, we need to go to court.
No, you don't, but I do.
Yeah, we need, we need to go...
I'm going through channels, I'm going to you first.
I understand, ma'am.
I'm going to you first.
Let me explain to you, if you go build the shed in your house illegal, we have to bring you to court to make it down, we can't just go, hey, call the guy, take the doors off, take it down, doesn't work this way.
Right, but I mean, state law supersedes town law.
Right, but, so you go see the state governor, and get a doors off and take it down, but right now, we don't have that power, we have, it has a process to get that power.
Right.
I'm gonna give the chance to someone else to speak, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next one, who's against, wanna come forward?
This guy looks familiar.
Yeah.
This guy looks familiar.
Yeah, I've been around town for a few years.
Yeah.
My name is Howard Smith, from West Wham, so I couldn't be further away from this situation, excuse me, but it's something I've been very familiar with. I am a past member of the road commission, and almost 10 years ago, when I went on the commission, parking in this problem, parking in this area was a problem then. It has constantly been a problem. We at one point in time could not do anything, because basically the road commissioners have no funding, whatever. We had to turn this matter over to the selectmen. The selectmen went through it, kicked it back to us again. It's a dead horse, plain and simple. Somebody should do something about it, and pretty soon. I'm also retired firefighter, 60 years on the department, so not being rude, your comment about blow the sirens? We can blow the sirens, ring the bell, blow air horns or whatever.
I've observed...
And people will not move, trust me. And as far as driving the trucks, as the lieutenant said, yes, maybe now, if you have no vehicles parked in front of the building, there is no problem. Once those vehicles park, you have a problem. The other thing that bothers me is those vehicles across the street are parked on town property. Look at the plan, the town line goes right through the building, so any parking in front of that building is on town property.
The building that's in front of us, or the building across the street?
The building across the street.
Okay.
Which is part of the parking problem.
Yeah, but that's not the matter in front of us, I'm afraid to say.
Okay, so, let's go back. I saw a plan a while back, I looked at it, and looking at that, it also looks like they may be encroaching on town property on the side street. No board, no commission in the town has the right to give anybody permission to use town property, other than possibly the town administrator. Who can give someone the permission to use a property for a day or a two or a function or something like that? Okay? Any other time property has been removed from the town, it has gone before the town meeting, and that is a very simple, that should be something familiar with people within this room. It was done at a town meeting in order to forfeit town property. So any encroachment on town property could cause a problem.
Do you mind, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm curious, the plan is right there, drawn by a licensed engineer, showing the parking spaces, can you point to the ones that are on town property?
On 11 Ave, they are. There's one, two, three, four, and a little bit of five, correct, Mr. Smith?
I'm not saying that these...
Not these, up there on the corner, right, Mr. Smith?
I'm not saying these are on town property, but I'm saying they're encroaching on town property.
Well, isn't an encroachment?
Right, right there.
Here's the town, here's the property line.
He's right.
And if you have any spaces, they overlap the town property line.
You're right.
So is that encroachment?
Well, if they overlap, and that's why I'm asking you to point it out.
Yep, and it's a plan right there.
Right. Well, again, Mr. Smith, that's why we have a town consultant. I'm sure he will come back and says, "This is an encroachment. It can be." I mean, we, we are in the beginning of the process, not, we cannot just assume everything, whatever is there is going. He might come back, says, "This is all bogus. This is, that's why we hired him to tell us." And I'm, trust me, he will point this out for us. Okay? Thank you, thank you for your, thank you.
And as far as, as far as you blowing the sireen, I've been behind cars that stop right in the middle of the street, and they're right behind them blowing the sireen, and they're so stupid, they just sit there because they don't know what to do. They panic and they do nothing. I get it.
Welcome to the room.
I have family members that drive emergency vehicles. I get it. I, I certainly do, and I appreciate the service of all the people that provide, all our first responders.
And after the meeting, I'll tell you how we solved one problem with a brush breaker.
Mr. Commissioner, I take a break.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're gonna take two seconds, please. Two-minute break.
Does anybody else want to speak?
Anyone else in public wanna come forward? Yes, ma'am, wanna come forward, please? All right, state your name and address.
I'm Alicia Salerno. I'm at 6 East Boulevard.
Okay.
So I think one of the first things I want to say, I'm feeling heartened that people are saying we're gonna look at this and put it to a site visit. I don't say I know all of the laws and the regulations, but I think part of the big challenge and concern on my end is that there has been a lot of doing and then asking for forgiveness later, and so I really appreciate hearing that. I'm here just to talk about the safety issue. It's a huge concern for me. That intersection is incredibly problematic when you have cars coming in from these four, four different ways, and there are one ways. I've been hearing that they're not supposed to be parking in front of the Stonebridge Bistro and that apartment. Cars are parked there all the time. I can look out my window and see. So that is still causing challenges, especially when we're talking about the parking that has been created at the 2 East Boulevard lot. So people are backing in and out. There's no sidewalks, there's no walkways. It's incredibly challenging walking there. I actually avoid it. I walk daily, and I don't walk down there certain times of the day, and especially in the summer, because there's just, I just don't know if I'm gonna get hit by a car or not. I've had a couple of close misses. The other thing that I did want to add is that they have a parking attendant who is just clearly not qualified to direct traffic. And so when this person is directing traffic, they're just caring about the car, and what they're actually doing is stopping the car and asking them, "Where are you going? Where are you eating? Where are you parking?" So that's causing backups, and then we get a long line, then you have pedestrians walking around, and then they're directing to where to go. So that's just, I've seen it happen. I've seen cars have near misses. It's just the, the summertime, it is way too challenging to have someone stopping traffic to put a car somewhere. The other thing is, as a resident, when I walk, I'm asked, "Where am I going and where did I park?" When I'm just walking myself, because they're so focused on making sure the person is parking in the right spot, and those spots are, have never been as, as many of the spots they have. I grew up here. I remember when the real estate office was Boomschenka's Ice Cream. I remember when the bistro was like, I would go buy a pack of gum for 25 cents. There was never as much parking as there. So they're, like, that's just the flat out live. It, you just, they just made spots, and it, they created it. So I oppose adding additional parking there due to the main safety concerns. I have challenges as a resident, walking. I avoid it. I don't think it's safe, and just a lot of it, I don't think is done in the right way in getting the right permission, and I would really like to see that happen.
All right, but don't you think if that parking done properly there will ease in the parking across the restaurant on that road?
No, I don't know why we need it. As Hannah said, they added the predicament that they're in by extending and adding more spots. So I just want to see it done right. If those are two separate properties, then those are two separate properties. The other thing is, is that the Marina has spots that are open majority of the year that do not get used on Friday, Saturday nights. So why aren't those Marina spots getting used when it's off-season, if we're considering that to be a part, like, if he owns both of those properties? Why are we having to extend it to the property across the street that is the safety, more of a safety issue than the Marina parking down below?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I mean, I'm sure.
There's a lot of parking spaces for an onset business, right? Like, it's just, that's the, that's the cost of doing business. Your customers are gonna find parking. There's St. Mary's parking down the street, they can walk. There's the onset parking lot. The town has added considerable parking over the years. It's not a hardship, or they, a couple of years ago, they were doing those little carts where you drove a bike. I mean, this is a hardship that's been created, which is great. We want business in onset, but I don't know, do we want it at the cost of our tourism as well? Like, people coming in, going, "Look at this traffic jam in this tiny little town. I'm supposed to be relaxed," and I'm getting asked, "Where am I, where I'm going to eat and where did I park?" Like, I don't think that's a good look for us either.
I think she has, um, her comment about somebody out in the street interviewing drivers is, has merit.
Thank you, Jim.
But, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wanna speak?
I have three online.
Online?
All right, put 'em on. So are you there?
John Reardon. Uh, yes, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
State your name and address, please.
Thank you. Uh, my name is John Reardon. I, uh, am a resident of 46 East Boulevard. Uh, I, I'm glad to hear that this will continue this matter, and there'll be further exploration of some of the issues that have been identified this evening. I just wanted to add just a couple of quick procedural questions, and an observation about Ms. Benoit's, uh, uh, observation. Chapter 48, Section 10, which is the state enabling act for variances, says that boards can grant variances from local zoning bylaws where, owing to the circumstances relating to the conditions, shape, and topography of the land, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the purposes of the bylaw. I, I would also add that the decision for granting a variance cannot stand unless the board finds that each one of these statutory requirements has been met. The three above prerequisites to the granting of a variance are conjunctive. The failure to establish any one of them is fatal to the petition for a variance. And I would also add that the burden rests upon the applicant making the variance, seeking the variance, I'm sorry, to produce evidence at the hearing that the statutory prerequisites have been met and the variance is justified. The law, as you know, I'm sure, does not confer upon any landowner a legal right to a variance. So I don't, based on what I've heard tonight, I've seen almost nothing from the applicant stating that they have met these prerequisites for a variance. Absolutely nothing. Now, that can continue, and it continues, so I, I won't, uh, beat that horse too much further, but I, I think, just a reminder that, and I'm not trying to be tautological here, but you have to hear from the applicant to say that they have met the requirements of the, uh, of the Section 48, Section 10, in order to be granted a, a variance. Massachusetts law, I know, as this board I'm sure well knows, the SJC has rendered a number of opinions that variances should be rarely granted. They're not like a special permit. They are, uh, you know, a deviation from the uniformity that this Commonwealth seeks from zoning boards of appeals when they're granting permits. So I, I, I think that, uh, so far, I've heard nothing from the applicant. I don't know what you've been hearing, but I haven't been hearing, I've been listening all evening, that these standards for the, uh, variance have been met by the applicant, especially the second and third points. The points about literal enforcement would involve substantial hardship, and the point that relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public. You've heard some people already tonight who said that this is a detriment to the public in terms of public safety. I live right down the street on East Boulevard, 46 East Boulevard. I underscore all the comments from the public already about how dangerous that intersection is, and it is, it's dangerous, extremely dangerous in the summer, but I think it's dangerous year-round. And also, I, I just don't think that, and Ms. Benoit mentioned this point, and I want to underscore it, a self-created hardship doesn't qualify as a hardship under 48, Section 10. And I think what we've got here is a self-created hardship. Oh, we need more parking, because what did we do? In violation of other rules and regulations, the restaurant was expanded, and now we need more parking. Well, that's a hardship that was created by the applicant himself. And so I really want to, I will be involved in following this, and I hope that the board will scrutinize very closely the standards that are required for a variance generally and in specifically with respect to this application. And I thank the chair, and I thank the board for their time and for listening to me tonight.
Uh, thank you, sir. I totally understand. We know how 48, Section 10 works. However, onset is a unique place. We have granted many, many variances because just the nature of onset. If we are, if we are not to grant any variance, nothing will get done in, in onset. And I'm starting to feel here, it's, it's like something personal between the applicant and the neighbor. I don't know if I'm wrong or right, but if it was me, I'd like to see it improved and if he's willing to do a site plan, but that's besides the point. iPad Cheryl, first name iPad?
Hello?
Yes, Cheryl.
Okay, my name is Cheryl Courtney. Live at 10 Pearl Ave, onset.
10 what? What's your address?
10 Pearl Ave, onset.
10 Pearl.
10 Pearl, yeah.
Go ahead.
Milwaukee Boulevard every day. It's a dangerous, dangerous intersection. Most of the time, we have children with us, maybe baby carriages, beach carts. The way it is now is very, very dangerous. So we don't need anything else to change. I mean, it's, it's very, very, it's scary. So I just want to, let's make my point across that it's, it's very, very dangerous for pedestrians. There's no sidewalks there, and when you come down to that intersection, you got cars coming every which way. So it's very, it's a very, very dangerous thing for residents, never mind anybody else coming to visit. There's, he's already taken up half that road with parking. Enough is enough.
All right, thank you. Next one, please. Yes, Arthur.
Mr. Furtman, go ahead. Mr. Furtman, we're not, we're not hearing anything here at the multi-service center. Possibly you have your mic, your thing muted, be on the bottom left-hand corner.
Uh, yes. Is that better?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So, as I said, my name is Arthur Furtman. My wife and I bought a cottage at 20 East Boulevard more than 52 years ago. We spend time here all year round. We purchased an onset because the area was beautiful, quaint, and safe. Over the last few years, things have changed. Cars are illegally parked on the bluff and directly in the intersection of East Boulevard, Ocean, and Onset Avenue. Setbacks and required buffer zones are ignored. What I worry about is difficult access for fire engines to the 100-plus-year-old houses of my neighbors on, on my street. I'm concerned that an engine, ambulance, or police car may be delayed or not get through the mess at the intersection. And I'm concerned that cars parked within feet of the fire hydrant at 2 East Boulevard will hinder access to the hydrant. Also, neither the Marina gas dock nor Stonebridge Grill have fire suppression systems, adding to my concerns. When my grandchildren go to the beach, they need to walk in the middle of this dangerous intersection between cars parking and backing out. I oppose this variance. I want my beautiful, quaint, and safe onset back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You got any more, John?
Uh, how is it?
Anybody else here that wants to be heard in, under the public comments section?
Mr. Smith, I, to answer your question about the encroachment, I'm sure it's gonna come up with the town engineer. However, the sidewalk is in the town property, and then the driveways start from the town property, but those driveways show 20 feet in the property or 19, which is, I don't have a scale, but I wrote that on a paper, but I'm sure we'll hear, I mean, you need 19 minimum, so it looks like they do have the 19 in their property. It just happened they have to continue the pavement to get to the curb. It doesn't mean they're encroaching. Yes, sir?
So the berm that you're talking about up there?
Yeah.
That's a Cape Cod berm. It's a, it's just a Cape, it's not a sidewalk or anything. It's just a Cape Cod berm. That's the town's berm, and we just took, we just took it, our parking, we put gravel out to that, but we have, on our property, plenty of room.
I know, I just kinda scaled it. You do have your 20 feet.
That was the existing topography of the road.
You have room to go deeper into the lot as well, if I'm looking at it correct.
Parking area as depicted is deeper into the lot.
Anyway, we'll, we'll wait to see what the town consultant says.
Okay.
All right, anyone else wanna speak against this project?
Far enough.
All right, back to the board. What do you think of all that, Troy?
Well, I understand all the safety concerns that the neighbors have, but I mean, I also understand the, the need for the parking, and people are just parking on the dirt already anyway.
Um, well, that's, obviously, it's a tough situation because it looks like even the restaurant is on the.
Yeah.
Main road, but I was thinking that it would probably require town approval, or I don't know who it would require, but that, because a lot of it, what's, I'm hearing is, is pedestrian safety, and if you were walking, you came across some 11th Ave and were able to go straight across to the other side, if there were a sidewalk right up against the building, perhaps, going down, all the way down to where it says brick paver sidewalk even, and then that would alleviate a lot of the issue with the pedestrians. You have somewhere to walk from 11th across and safely down that.
Would you be increasing, you could be sued though, couldn't you? If somebody fell and got hurt on there?
Well, it doesn't matter. Again, it's not part of what's in front of us. I think it would be a lawsuit.
Yeah, I mean, we don't wanna get, impose things to do in the town property. Let's stick with our.
Well, it's, the building's on town property.
Not, well.
What building?
It's an existing problem.
We're looking at, we're looking at this, and you're showing us that.
Because that creates some of what's being talked about, I think.
It goes right back to the right-of-way on Main Street. They came in here asking, "Do we meet the bylaw for X number of units?"[1774.36] They came in here asking, do we meet the bylaw for X number of units? And we got bogged down by a question about overburdening a right-of-way. What's in front of us is this. What you're pointing at is not what's in front of us.
Are you talking, you're talking about the restaurants?
Yes.
This is not a problem now.
I'm not trying to be adversarial.
Well, I'm just saying, what I'm saying is, I think wherever they have parking on the street, the issue is, in this area, there is no sidewalk.
Understood. We've heard it from five or six witnesses.
They have to put a warrant, they could put sidewalks. Very simple. They just need the budget, and they could do it. That's, has nothing, it's not, has nothing to do with us. Jimmy?
The best testimony I heard was from the lieutenant from the fire department. He indicated that this proposal decreases the problem, does not increase the problem. That's what I've heard. That's all I have to say.
Good to.
I have nothing to say right now.
Christopher?
You know, parking is always a problem in Onset, and Onset does need more parking. I do see the issues the, the neighbors bring up with more vehicles backing in and out of this congested intersection already.
If you tore everything in that intersection down to the ground and asked for permits to rebuild it, you'd get a flat NO.
Are there pedestrian, like, walks going across these streets anywhere? Any markings on the streets?
I don't know. I mean, this is just, I've been, I have been sick, I haven't been, have a chance to go there to look. This is the beginning of this project. I'm sure, usually, Richard visits a lot. Did you have, did you visit there? Or you go by this all the time?
I go by that a lot more than I want.
I haven't been in that area for a while, so.
I've been by when all the work was being done without a permit, and now they come to us, so.
Yeah.
There's a person online, too.
All right.
I'm kind of okay with adding more parking in Onset.
Connor, what do you think?
I think that the, it was interesting and important to hear the resident comments and the neighbors. Obviously, the intersection there is problematic without a sidewalk that's going down East Boulevard, where, yeah, apparently, a lot of residents are walking up and down there. But I think that the area that's actually problematic, this intersection, is maybe like 20 or 30 feet of concern. If you're worried about your kids or your grandkids running around there, then, I don't know, have them hug the building of the Stone Bridge and not run through an intersection, not to be coy or anything, but that's also not what we're looking at. And I think that the fact of the matter is, after hearing everything, that they did erect 10 or more new parking spaces. Whether or not it's a parking lot, there are 10 or more spaces.
Okay. But that's a good answer. Everything referring back to that Stone Bridge, it's irrelevant. Everybody, it's, you keep your mind away from the project. Thank you. Okay, who else? Someone else online?
John's got one, I think, yeah. George?
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here tonight and reviewing this project. I, I'm at 12 East Boulevard. I'm shocked a little bit by your, your acceptance of this project, because we have such a problem in the summertime with parking on, in Onset. And this, this is just going to exacerbate that problem. So I would look very, very closely at, well, I'm, I'm kind of interested that this is a separate property, and how does a separate property have parking for property across the street? So that's, that's one thing that comes to mind. But, yeah, but this is a, this is a very, very tough intersection. In the summertime, many, many people cross this property walking. I know myself, I've had problems with almost being hit by a car. So I hope you take a very, very close look at it, and thank you for your, your close look at this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. We didn't accept the project yet. I know you said you're surprised we accept the project. That hasn't been, we accepted the application, but we haven't accepted the project and approved it. But anyway, that being said, apparently, Bob, we have to wait to hear from town engineer. We have to wait to see about, like you said, the gravel is allowed. I'm not familiar with this, I just have to wait. All these things will, let's, let's hear from Allen Major, and we saw all the differences. And, and granting a variance, it's not strange over there at all. Matter of fact, right, there's a yellow hotel next to it, and the one next to it, they built the two, two units, and he was allowed like 600 square feet. We gave him a variance for 1,200 square feet, and he went to court and won. So variance is not, the judge see it normal there. I mean, if, if you, if you grant a variance in R130 for such thing, it'd be a problem or, and a lot, that's two acre in West Wayham, but this is Onset, unfortunately, it's on top of each other, and that's how it is. And that's the beauty about it in the summer, it's busy, and it's only two months, and that's the end of it. So these people with businesses cash in for two months, except Mark Anthony's, God love him, he stays busy, but everyone else, everyone else don't, don't make it. If you don't help them, they're not going to make it. But again, that's my opinion. We need four, four like me. But anyway, so we'll wait to see from town engineer.
We'll set up the 53G account.
53, because you won't review without you setting it up. So the best bet, go setting it up tomorrow, let them review it. He'll come back with next hearing with comments, and you guys can start talking. And you guys.
My, my suggestion would just be to, to, we would ask for a continuance for the four weeks, for the second.
Four weeks instead of two?
For four, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Because, you know, to give him, I, I don't know what his workload is, you know, but.
Yeah, you give him a chance.
Yes, the first, the first meeting in March.
And be, and be comfortable to call him and discuss with him.
Yes.
I mean, about, see if you guys could come in agreement on something.
But just so everyone's clear, so the only variance we're looking for is from a 20-foot landscape buffer to a 10-foot landscape buffer. It's nothing to do with.
That's what you're telling us.
The building or, and we'll find out if I'm right.
Exactly. We, I really, honestly, I don't know. I'm sure he'll come back with an answer, and the commissioner has an answer. Let's get it together. It'll come together. It takes some time, but it will come together.
Move to continue until 3:12, 25.
All right. We have, we have a motion. So we have a motion to continue by Jimmy, this matter until March 12, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. All right, it's continued.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, have a good night. So get going on that, so we have answers. Good luck. First hearing, 2025. All right, any things you guys want to discuss? Again, I had an interesting, like I said, I had a good chit-chat and email from the commissioner for future special permits, and this always like, oh, give me part, he, he has to give a partial occupancy or temporarily, and there's always confusion, do this, do that. So I think we should take a position, like, you got to go to the commissioner with everything done, not one shrub missing. If one shrub is missing, missing, you come back to us, we say, okay, we need a bond, $200 for shrub, whatever it is, that town consultant will tell us what's the price for that, and we do 150% in Wayham, and then we could give him a release. And certain things, let's say you're doing five units, we could always, and he put the binder, and it's, it's freezing, he can't put a top coat, we could say, okay, we condition you yet, you don't get the last occupancy until you finish the paving. Sound like that? All right?
So you're saying, just to be clear, that they either get a bond when they want partial occupants to give, to get occupancy if everything's not complete?
For instance.
I thought the statement was made, everything needs to be done, and we're not given any occupancy.
I know, but sometimes, for instance, to give an example, that big.
No, I understand, there's always.
That big storage area, I mean, that's a five, six million dollars. They can't plant, do planting in the winter.
Well, they should have done it when they were supposed to.
Right, and, I mean, they get to, yeah, and they barely get done in November with the grass. Now you're going to hold on five months of business, so, but in this case, he gave them temporary occupancy, but for the future.
That puts him, that puts him in a tough spot, too.
Exactly, so.
It's all of us in a tough spot.
Right, but for the future, somebody like them, he's going to tell them, you know what, go to the board, let them decide. They come to us, we say, okay, how many shrubs? 50 shrubs? The commission, I mean, the engineer tells us 50 shrubs, it's worth 3,000, okay, you got to put a bond for 500.
Well, we approve a set of plans, and if it's on there, it's on there, if it's not on there, it's not on there. But if they don't put it on what's on that plan, then they don't, shouldn't get anything.
Right. Correct, but you're not getting my point.
No, I am getting your point. You're making, you're saying that there's, oh, okay, we screwed up, well, you couldn't get them in, or you forgot to get them in, give us some more money, and then you put them in, and then you do it. It's, it's a, it's a give-and-take game. How about you, you pass your plans in, it's not done, you don't get nothing, I'm sorry. You got plans, you know what you're doing, you pay an architect, an engineer, all these people, you know what you're doing.
I don't agree with that.
I agree, but.
Things happen sometimes, and I think that, I agree that we should, in, in the case of winter and just not, they have a lot of money that they would be.
Sometimes you can't.
Somebody out of business, maybe, I don't know.
You finish the house, you can't put a binder. What are you going to do? For example, you shut the person's.
I think it all comes down to plan and, and who's ever in charge of the job, that's all.
But I do like the bond idea, right? So that they have something to lose if they don't complete it.
Of course, and we charge.
It should be the value of whatever it is they have to do, perhaps.
Well, he said 150%.
The town requires 150% of the value.
And 150, 150 is not a cast-in-stone number. We can say, look, you know, we think you had a chance to put those trees in, we think you intentionally waited, you're letting them grow, you're buying six-inch trees, and you're going to grow them over the winter to make them 12-inch trees. We want four times the amount.
No, listen, I build, sometimes.
You understand what I'm saying.
Sometimes you get, sometimes timing, weather, contractors, it doesn't always work the way you want, unfortunately.
You call the plumber up, and he says, I'll see you Monday.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying?
But he doesn't say which Monday. On the same effect, if you're building a house, and you know you need your roof on it to get it watertight, you don't leave your roof open until you, you can buy shingles at a certain price, you put the roof on. All right, so if you want to keep just making all these excuses up, how about, they got a permit, I mean, a plan, they send it in, yes or no? It alleviates him getting a phone call, it alleviates everybody from having to do an extra step.
But that, that's true.
Look at my glasses, so I can look at my glasses.
Okay. You need your glasses to see your glasses?
Yes.
Because it's loose.
It's loose. Thank you.
Anyway, I guess it was, I think it was a good approach by the commissioner. I guess we'll see what happens.
Sounds good.
May I speak, Chairman?
Yes.
I just think it needs to be very explicit and spelt out. Then this makes it, there's no questions. So when someone comes to me a year after the permit's been issued and it's built, and I just open it up, and it's like, nope, it says you have to be 100%, or you have to get a report from Phil that you're substantially done or whatnot. If you're not done, go to see you guys. It, it needs to be spelt out.
Right.
No gray area for them and no interpretation for me.
Well, how is it, how is it stated now?
It's not. So like the, the one the chairman just brought up about the storage facility?
Yeah.
The only condition was an as-built to be, to be presented to myself and to the planning board. He handed one, and he handed two. I want my occupancy, I have a $5,000 investment.
I gave you the as-built. Maybe it wasn't built per plan, but it was his, it was what I built.
But he met, he met all building code issues. He met everything for occupancy, there's no reason for me to hold it back. But if the special permit is conditioned, then I can. If I hold back someone's, if I hold back someone's occupancy permit, especially in something that big, no. It can't happen. It has to be conditioned in the permit.
So these are standard, we have to add, as we go, we add them to the.
So I'm, I'm confused. If we have a slight plan review, and we say that these plans are good, and we pass them, and they turn them in, why is there any more discussion? They know what they're doing. They know, dig a hole, put a tree in it, and get your money back. I'm sorry, there's ways of getting everything done. Or have somebody that's on top of it saying, hey, we got cold weather coming, we need to get these trees in for us before we worry about anything else. It's all about being smart, and we can't keep, just keep giving people, oh, I'm sorry you screwed up, let's give you a permit.
Well, well, if you, if you try to put them a bond, it's fine, it's 150% the bond.
How about we don't need, and that's somebody else we got to pay to make the bond out, keep track of it, pay out of it, do it, it just causes all. Richard's point is, now you got to hire somebody to go perform under the bond. I don't want to beat this horse to death, but I do, there was something else that just came to mind. I thought we were going to have in front of us tonight on, on Head of the Bay Road there, Red Brook Road, the 20 units. I believe that was, that's going to be in March. I believe it's going to be on March 26. Wasn't in time for this agenda? I, I thought it was for down the road. Okay.
I thought it was on this, I want to ask to change it to something.
For sale.
For sale. They keep getting extension.
Well, that, it's already been sold. We granted the permit, somebody turned around and sold it to somebody else, and they didn't do what they told us. They told us that, that the neighbors had input, the neighbors had input in on the job, and we, we took the neighbors' input and we put it in, and then they turned around and sold it and changed all the options on it. Well, no, they sold it, and then the new buyer came and said, can we change it from sold units to rented units? And we, and as an applicant, they considered it a minor modification. We, we considered it a major modification. In the long run, for whatever, and it ended up in court. In the long run, we ended up capitulating and letting them convert from sold units to rented units. Now they're coming in front of us again, saying, we need an extension, we need an extension of time, because we haven't broken ground, we haven't done anything yet, and we'd like to convert it from rented units to sold units. Now, I don't know if that's a game, like, okay, remember the board wanted them to be sold units?
Jim?
So let's go.
Yes. You're discussing a project that you haven't advertised, and the applicant isn't here.
It's not, it's not public.
It's an open meeting.
I'd be careful.
No, no, it's not, it's not.
It's not a public hearing. You're, you're correct, but.
It's not an open hearing, it's been closed and done.
But that's all right, Josh, you want to shut us down, we'll shut down. I'm done.
They are coming in front of you.
My motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
You'll shut down by the apartment, by the director of.
I, I'm exposed.
Wind Use Corporation.
The director of nothing.
What's that?
I said I'm the director of nothing. Ask my wife, I don't direct anything.